At six thirty, and I'm going to ask Kathy to lead us in the pledge and to do the roll call.
Yes, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Connie?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Rodriguez? Mayor Strong?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We now have an item for public communications, and we welcome any comments from the public on any matters having to do with the city's jurisdiction that are not on the posted agenda, because those comments come when we get to that agenda item. And generally limited to three minutes per person. And I welcome anyone from the public who'd like to address the city council at this time. So, I'm not hearing anybody. Because of telecon-- by the way, we are meeting by teleconference, which is still as authorized by the state, as an exception to the ground acting requirements because of COVID, and we're hoping that that will actually continue as long as we--
Padgett muted himself. Padgett muted.
Is it working now?
It's working well.
I don't know what happened. It just said it was disconnected, and I had not muted myself. I don't know what that was about. Okay, anyway, I was saying that we were being telephonically authorized by the state due to COVID, and that because of that, if people do want to address the council, you need to speak up so I know you're out there and want to address us. So, there were-- nobody came forth through public comments. So now we're going to go to public matters. We did not have any agendaized items there, nor do we have any ordinances. And we do have a consent calendar item, not any minutes, but approval of an alternative inverter replacement at the water treatment plant solarway for a total of nineteen thousand eight hundred units of exchange. And it's a change from a previously authorized amount. That's the only item on our consent calendar. Unless somebody would like to pull that item, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar.
I don't move. I will second.
Okay, moved by Larry, seconded by Jerry. Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we will have a roll call vote.
Yes, Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Connie?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Rodriguez? Mayor Strong?
Yes.
Muted again, Padgett. Your sound is cutting out. I want to call him by telephone.
Madge, can I take over instead of you getting off?
It just went back on again for some reason. I do not understand this. It's completely out of my control. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, but yes. Yeah, so if I go muted again inadvertently, please do take over. And I'm turning it over to Brian for the city manager report.
You, Mayor Strong. So, we have two items on there for attention of the council. One is a letter of support that was requested by the Mendocino County Border Agency. They're looking to obtain a grant from P G A D to help fund their activities and their operation. As we all know, what's happening this past-- or during this summer, so far this year, the county has experienced drought conditions, water shortages for communities, both incorporated and unincorporated. And this is one of the areas that the county is looking to put together a program with staff to do outreach with various communities in the county, as well as working with property owners, and then looking at the whole situation on the coast. So, the letter of support has been drafted. It is in your packet, and staff is recommending approval as is ready to submit that.
Anybody have a question or comment about that? I guess we'll do a regular motion, and I'm second on this. Hearing no questions or comments from the public. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
I will sub.
Thank you, Jerry.
Seconded, Larry.
Thank you, Larry. Okay, I guess we can go to a roll call vote. Kathy?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Connie?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Sabrina, you're muted.
Thank you. Mayor Strong?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, and if we can, Mayor sign up within the next couple days. I think there's a quick turnaround back to the county for their grant special, so thank you for that. The second item here is a revisit of an item that predates me. This is an item that is noted on the agenda that dates from June tenth, twenty twenty. The council had several sessions last year, last spring, during the height of the COVID pandemic, as of this experience, the experience from the community and the county. There was an item that we brought before the council with due significant review. We had public comment to pass a enforcement ordinance that would tie city enforcement actions with county health department or health board mandates to prevent the spread of the infection. And at that time, it's the council failed to pass it for any number of reasons, and we'll again to bring it back before the council. It's your pleasure if it's necessary, and that's what we're looking to put before the council today, because kind of a discussion if this is necessary in lieu of the conditions that the city is facing with the uptick in numbers. And Jim Lance is on. He's presenting as well. Or he's president as well. He can respond. He's the one who did most of the document drafting and finding the council back there years ago.
Jim, would you like to come in at this point?
Sure. So, in your packet, the copy of the agenda summary, you have to draft the urgency ordinance and resolution we prepared a year ago. The urgency ordinance at that time was modeled after the same ordinance of the county and cities in the county all adopted. And I understand that Mayor Strong asked us to be on the agenda to determine whether or not the will of the council is to put it on a future agenda for introduction, perhaps not as an urgency ordinance, but a regular ordinance. Last time it was on as an urgency ordinance, requires or admits vote approval, and it takes effect immediately. In contrast, if it went on as a regular ordinance, it would be two meetings. Two meetings. One thing I can point out is that if you refresh and reread the ordinance, the resolution, and all of that, there were extensive bindings that, for example, Governor Newsom issued a stay-at-home order and the blueprint tier system. And other orders, stay-at-home orders, and the county similarly adopted stay-at-home orders. And so at the time that this was presented to you, there was much more rigorous enforcement orders on books at the state level and in the county. And in June, June fifteen, the governor rescinded stay-at-home orders and the blueprint tier system. And so what we have right now on the county level is regulations about wearing masks and about mega events, one thousand persons or more are no longer stay-at-home orders. So, it may be, if we were to proceed with this, there'd need to be some editing of the prior ordinance to take out references to orders that have since been rescinded. And it also might be premature to bring it at this point, given that we don't have those orders to enforce them. The entire purpose of the ordinance was to enforce existing county health orders that have since been watered down quite a bit. So, that's just an observation.
So, once again, just summing up where we are with this item. Yes, it would need some revisions to the recitals that are associated with the ordinance to support it. But it is the-- you know, right now, it is presenting it back to the council, but it's your pleasure. If it's essentially you have a majority here to take it forward, we'll do the work to re-present it as a standard ordinance for your review and consideration.
So, I'm sorry, my sound went off again. Not only could I not be heard, but I couldn't hear the end of what Jim Lance said. But I just heard what Brian said, which was it's up to kind of the consensus or the will of the council whether to bring back. And if we did that, it would be a modified ordinance to reflect whatever the current potential health protocols that are mandated by the county. So I'm just going to put my two cents in right now in case I get cut off again. And that is that we do have some more concerns being raised in the last several weeks. And I believe that there are mandates now for indoor masking. And I'm not sure that there's much else besides that, except as Jim pointed out, the very large mask gatherings. So, but the indoor masking requirement, especially things that are within one's control, like if you have a big meeting space and you're responsible for that meeting space, then your employees and your personnel--
Padgett, you're cut off.
Now, we can't hear you, Madge. Is there anybody else who would like to-- are there any other council members that want to express their thoughts on the matter until Madge is able to come back online?
I am online, but go ahead, Sabrina. Sorry. Look, my last-- So, okay, I'm back with audio. I do not understand what is going on. It's the first time it's ever done. Yes, that is just as a mind of its own. Who would like to weigh in? Jerry?
You know, I've heard this was coming back. I kind of along the same lines as what Jim was saying. Maybe at this point it's a little premature. I've been kind of pulling businesses, saying, hey, you're mulling over something. What works for you? What's happening? I find most businesses are providing masks or the Chamber Program, or they're doing it, providing them themselves. I've talked to a lot of them and said, you're offering it to them. We're pressing them. And they wear them. Kind of some have encountered issues with some folks being abusive. The question they ask me is, well, whatever you do, are you guys going to come and enforce it? Are you guys going to do that? That's not what we were talking about. I mean, last time it was businesses that weren't playing nice. I'm kind of seeing businesses playing nice right now. It's folks out there that are being difficult. I've witnessed it at a lot of places, not just businesses. Folks are anti-vaccine, anti-mask, and they're taking out their ire on whoever they deal with. So it's really hard sometimes to regulate civility. I guess my issue would be that I think it's premature at the moment. If I be in October, November, and all of a sudden things take a turn for the worse, and the state issues some stringent rules, then I might be inclined. But I would also want staff to research, I guess, a way to enforce the administrative provisions. I know that some cities have opted, issued administrative citations, and then a third party does the collecting. That way, we're not racking up legal bills. Basically, it becomes-- and I would be open to something like that, because getting tied up in the courts for the city is, you know, again, is a good use of Jim's time. But at the same time, I think we can't have an ordinance that is toothless also. But I guess I would not be inclined to push it forward now, but I might be inclined in the future, depending on what the state's made of events are. That's my thought.
Greta?
I too was perplexed when I saw this come back. I feel like our bookstore has been one of the most stringent in its COVID protocol enforcements. We never let the mask mandate drop in our store, even after June fifteen. We did get pushback from customers. Those who didn't have masks were invited to use the disposable paper mask provided by the Chamber of Commerce. Some took them, some left, and we were okay with that. About three weeks ago, things started to change, and more folks were coming in with masks. And today, I think I gave away one mask. Everyone else came in with a mask and didn't even need to be asked to put it on. I've also noticed in other businesses around town, more and more of the customers and employees are wearing masks again, even before the mandate back from the county. Safeway now is almost a hundred percent mask when you go in, as opposed to a month ago, when, you know, it felt like the Wild West in there. So I feel like the community is policing itself, and people are taking their own precautions to make themselves feel safe and to make their community neighbors feel safe. We all know some businesses aren't playing by the rules, and those of us who are concerned just aren't going there. I don't see how passing an ordinance at the city level is going to change that. So I would not support this at this time. I think that we have to trust adults to do what feels right for them, for their community. And it's just going to poke the bear if we try to pass this now, I believe.
Other comments?
Sure, this is Sabrina. I'll pipe in. I'm a business is quite a bit on a daily basis, and I would agree that most businesses are trying to encourage their patrons to use the mask. There are, however, some businesses in town that don't even have the signage on their front door. Maybe some re-education, for those businesses, you know, if it's either Chamber or otherwise, some entity reach out to the businesses that do that, just the signage alone. I'm not in favor of fines. I don't think that it has any value. It'll just, like Greta said, it's like poking the bear. People will just get angry, and there's not really anything that's good that's going to come of it. People are either going to wear their mask or not wear their mask. And what's ultimately happening in the community is if a business isn't doing what you want, then people are choosing to go elsewhere. It may be that the business is choosing to be on mask, and that's attracting people. But on the other hand, there may be a certain clientele that no longer wants to use that business. They're going abroad, voting to make decisions for self and others where we want to spend our dollars. It's just unfortunate to see the division, but I think a mask mandate would only serve to create more division.
I shut that off for a moment there. I missed a tiny--
I meant a mask mandate. I meant a penalty for not following the standard. I want to correct that.
So I guess the current mask mandate is really on individuals, and I never had envisioned the city starting to enforce such a thing against individuals. It's really up to each individual to do the right thing and protect themselves and others. If it does affect whole businesses, or churches, or other gatherings of people where the sponsors of that are responsible, I do not want to find us in a position like we did last year with a business that was just flagrantly violating the health protocols. Hearing what I've already heard from councilmembers, it's clear that we aren't ready to move forward on such a thing right now. But I personally will, and others, I think, will also kind of follow what the protocols are from the county. And if it turns out we might have a problem, I would like to be proactive and have something on the books that helps us not have to go to a temporary restraining order. And it's the only way to seek compliance. But I never envisioned that we would, you know, go and find individuals for them wearing a mask. That's really up to each individual to be responsible. So it sounds like we're going to put this on the back burner. Yes, Greta?
I just wanted to add one more comment. I think that, you know, Jerry mentioned that if things continue in the vein that they are, and we see we find ourselves in an even worse situation in October or November during actual flu season, then it might be worth looking at something like this again. But I wanted to say that if we get to that point and we do start considering something along this line, I think it would be incredibly important for the council to bring in Willetts P D to have this discussion with us, because they would be the ones tasked with enforcing this. And I believe that there's a fairly strong anti-vax, anti-mask attitude, at least in some of our police departments. So it's a little bit of a conundrum if you have an entity that's, you know, meant to enforce, and they themselves don't, aren't behind it. So if the council wants to pass something like that, we need to have that conversation with them to make sure we're all on the same team and we're all moving in the same direction. Otherwise, we're just warring with ourselves, and that's not a good look for the city.
Okay, so I appreciate having this conversation and verified what our feelings are about it and that there's, you know, we'll have to see how things unfold. This variant has certainly, you know, walloped us in a way that we didn't expect months ago. And I just, I would like us to be as safe as we can in this community. So, and I really appreciate all the businesses that are being very vigilant and all the individuals. So, yeah.
So, Mayor, I just want to add two additional thoughts here. One is, we have talked about this ordinance and the mechanics of enforcement and the practicality of it internally with staff. One of the things like Sabrina mentioned, we would definitely want to do some education, get some new signs out there. And I don't know if that's in coordination with the Board of Health or Dr. Corn's office or Chamber of Commerce, but we think there's a void out there that needs to be filled on that front. And back to references to Dr. Corn on his latest update. He's not envisioning any new mandates that, you know, basically are returned to the blueprint at this time. He has issued several mandates relating to testing and ramping up for mandatory vaccinations for employees of various organizations, but nothing that's related to community events or community, you know, activities or public gatherings. We're watching that. He's watching that. His staff is watching that. And if there are changes, as we just noted, then we'll bring this back to the council with some additional guidance from Dr. Corn, how he can go this out effectively and actually do what he needs to do, and that is to stop the spread of the infection.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one other item on the report, and it's just kind of FYI. I just want to take a moment here to thank the participation of the council at Monday's C I P session. Staff was appreciative of the comments that were expressed, and we're going to be looking at improving that document and returning it to the council for subsequent adoption. And along those lines, I just want to announce that we are ramping up for that September first public forum that is going to be looking at water infrastructure, the water programs of the city, the items that I mentioned earlier about supplying water to the coastal communities, and also our whole water cell. So the agenda will be forthcoming. It will be looking at those items, and hopefully we can have a nice healthy discussion of which staff would counsel and the members of the public.
Is there anything new on the, however, is being thought of to supply water to the coast?
Well, there's good news and bad news. Port Bragg is desperate for water, so it's a coastal community. U K I R is moving forward, and the Forest Supply yesterday talked about that they are tracking down. The county is securing some funding that would help support this initiative. And also, we're looking at the mutual aid agreement that would be reciprocal, not strictly related to water and water supply, but also how we can apply aid to our fellow municipalities in the county. And that's actually, that's going to come before the council on your September eighth meeting. So I think that is timely. But I haven't had a chance to get back to the county staff on where they are, but like I said, there's a desperate need. U K I R wants to supply water. I guess there's now they're looking at the issue of is trucking the best option. It's going to require a lot of, a large truck fleet. How is that going to be mobilized? Who's going to oversee it? I heard that there was a comment relating to the carbon footprint impact of that truck traffic. So, yeah, you know, there's details especially taking place. But, you know, I have explained to the county officials, right now, we're still offline with our ground production site, and it's going to be offline for a couple more weeks. So we could not respond to any requests at this time.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Brian? Any questions about the city manager report? And then moving on, we are going to our department recommendations. Approval of a school resource officer agreement with the Willetts Unified School District. And we will be hearing from Chief Lizaraga. And by the way, isn't Chief actually not interim anymore as New York Police Chief? He keeps showing up on the agenda as interim. I believe he's actually our chief.
I'll let Brian answer that. It's not an easy answer. We're still dangling them. We're pushing those envelopes to see how much work we can get out of them and helping them quickly get going over there. No, there's some minor issues that we have to resolve yet. We're in a home stretch. There were some medical items that we had to get clearance on. As you can see and from his actions, Chief Lizaraga is a healthy individual. He's upright. He has a heart beat. He is doing what he needs to do. He has the strength of the Dodgers with him, or wherever that counts. Yes, he is interim, but we'd like to resolve that, but then probably in about a month here.
You know, when you say dangling, the first thing I thought of, I thought of myself as butt funny. I see a big cherry right in front of me. I'm like--
That's the technique that we are enforcing over here now, and, you know, relying on our cartoon.
Okay, so--
School resource officer.
School Resource Officer. As you all know, it has been a position that has been authorized in the past. It hasn't been authorized in the last couple of years because of financial constraints, staffing constraints and all of that. Shortly earlier this year, I had a conversation with Superintendent Westerberg at that time, School District, and I asked him his position on the School Resource Officer, whether he was in favor of them or not. He was very adamant in his support for that. And I asked him if that was something that they were going to pursue as a district in their budget. He indicated they would. And then after the budget process for them was approved, I reached out to the new superintendent, Mr. Aldrich, and had a seminar conversation with him. And he is very much in support as well of the School Resource Officer. It is in their budget to support the position as the agenda item indicates. It's kind of like a 75%, 25% split, 25 being on our end. And School Resource Officers, from my own philosophy, do a tremendous job of creating really solid bridges to the community via all of the youth in our community at schools and being there. It's also one of those things that SROs are certainly seen as mentors, as people in a position that can guide kids. Being in the school proper allows them to be approached, you know, whether it's break time, lunchtime, after school, and just being around and being that familiar, friendly, approachable face that can really build those bridges, not only for community policing efforts, but for information efforts, for mentoring efforts. And I think it would go a long way to really solidifying that bridge between ourselves and the department and the community. As you see in the agenda item, the National Association of School Resource Officers, that goes providing safe learning environments in our nation's schools, providing valuable resources to school staff members, fostering those positive relationships with youth I was talking about, developing strategies to resolve problems affecting youth and protecting all students. And then it kind of goes into the triad concept of philosophy of the SROs, which is your three parts, your one part educator, another part informal counselor, mentor, and obviously your law enforcement officer, if that makes any sense. So with the School District in support, the SRO position is still in our budget, but it's not obviously funded right now. We would like to go ahead and proceed to the new approval to start looking for a suitable candidate and place them in the schools. The school just started. I believe this would be an ideal time to try and insert somebody as soon as we can get the selection done and get them into backgrounds, get them into the position. There is a rough draft of an MOU between ourselves and the district that Mr. Aldrich went over. It's the same one that we had here in Capio. And we both agree that if this position is approved, we'll sit down and kind of go through. There won't be any wholesale changes. It would just be a matter of changing dates and everything. And then just kind of really looking at applying to what the SRO to do and what we expect the SRO. So with that, we're hoping that we have your support and go ahead and proceed. I'm open to any questions.
Okay. First, any questions from the council members? Jerry?
Chief, is the funding on the School District side, is it grant funding or is it out of their general fund? I'm kind of curious how stable the funding is on the school side.
My understanding it is on their general fund side, it's in their budget, a lot of it for this. And, you know, I'm not privy to their book, but from everything I've heard and it's been indicated to me, they're pretty stable.
So in the event that the funding for some reason disappeared in the past, it's either been a deal on our end where we weren't able to field an officer, our staff reduced and so we had to back out. I know when I did the grant, it was a grant from the school that obtained the safety grant, but later on, I believe, Chief won our joint agreement with them. They apparently took it out of general fund, not the safety fund.
Yeah, and it's also something that would continue to look for grants on our end as well, to continue to fund the program. You know, once established, I see it remaining really a permanent part of our, you know, authorized technical organization as far as being able to get as much as we can from that asset. So whether it's the School District looking for grants, and I'll sit down with Mr. Aldrich about that, or ourselves, or even half of us, we continue to fund this going forward.
Greta?
Well, along those lines, I guess I would just feel more comfortable if there were something in the MOU that sort of lined out, you know, what would happen in the event that the school couldn't provide their portion of the funding, just so that we could make sure the city isn't on the hook for the full amount. And while I agree, Chief, with the idea that this would ultimately become a permanent part of the police department, and I like that concept, I feel like it might also be worth just having some language in there that, you know, depending on the city's financial situation, because as we know, the Medicaid funds do have a sunset date. And if we aren't able to figure out a way to maintain that funding level, then I'd hate to be someone who's brought in with the understanding that this is a long-term, you know, permanent type position, only to find out later that, you know, it can't be because of financial constraints. So.
I agree. And that's certainly something that I'll be discussing with Mr. Aldrich.
Any other questions from council members?
Please, Suprina.
I think that considering the renewable rate that we have at the police department, having an additional person who's already passed the background check, which we've heard over the course of, of course, particularly the last year, be complaining about some members of the community, the youth in our area, and how they're in motion and redirect to somehow lucky or activities. But, and I see this as somewhat of an opportunity and opportunity for the police to go the right path with this partnership. I read their, I read their monthly agendas and I can believe that this is because of their funding is a good opportunity. And I think this is a nitty chip.
Suprina, your sound was a little spotty and then it just went off, but I think, I think you got, yeah, go ahead and finish if you haven't.
I have my video off because I'm trying to make my sound work better. Even though I'm sitting right across the street from City Hall, and I still have bad vision, there's a cell tower right to the night of me. I do apologize. Ultimately, what I said is that I support this and I see it as a benefit for the community.
Unless Larry wants to weigh in, I'm going to open up if there's any comments from the public. I don't see Larry on the phone anymore.
I'm here. I look at a great idea.
Okay. Any comments from the public on this item? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
How many motions approved of the agenda?
Suprina moved. Second? I think Jerry is seconding that. Okay, so we can proceed to a vote.
Sorry about that. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Connie?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
My phone.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
It's a very good idea. Okay, so we have departmental, lots of reports from our departments. And once again, it's very hopeful to us on the council and perhaps to devoted members of the public who want to get details to have these reports. And we've got an opportunity here for either any of the department heads to highlight anything that they would like to bring to our attention and any questions that the council members have on any of the departmental reports. Very thorough. Actually, go ahead, who was that?
Mayor, this is Dusty Dooley, the Community Development Director. I just wanted to provide a correction to one of the items that was listed as the Community Development Department report. And let me just pull that up real quick here. The, sorry, I've been working on, I'm here and I didn't hear myself correctly. Well, under the report, it reported that there was six cannabis businesses reporting for this quarter. And actually, it's six facilities, but 13 individual licenses. There's two licenses that have yet to report for the quarter. So I just wanted to provide that update and that clarity because otherwise it looks like we went from 15 businesses paying taxes to six businesses paying taxes from one quarter to the next. And that's not the case. So just wanted to provide that correction and clarification. Thank you.
I had an editorial, and I can't help being an editor, a comment that when we added or when you, as part of the forum, it added all of the priorities that were set by the council a number of months ago, and then coming each department and report on those, it gets to be an awful lot of verbiage in there and it gets to be hard to find the nuggets of what's actually happening. And some of the priorities cross department boundaries and so they end up in there two or three times. And so I would just like to look at keeping it fairly streamlined so it doesn't become too hard to find the, you know, the really good crunchy stuff, which is, you know, what you accomplished last month, you know, what's a problem, if any, and what's happening next month. I like the idea of checking in on those priorities, but I don't know that we need to fill up pages every time, every month, with it sort of repeating the same thing. Some of those are going to be, they're going to be with us for years.
I understand that. It's still a work in progress. I know it's not perfect and we're still trying to do it and essentially work with the departments. As you said, there's some overlap and I think what I want to do is essentially create another report, which would be authored by me, and I'm just going to condense and merge all the goals and kind of streamline it a little bit for the reporting purpose and then just have the fuller point response in that fashion.
That would be great. And that could be maybe just done quarterly or something because as I said, some of these goals are going to be, you know, long-term, multi-year goals. And so to do it every single month gets kind of repetitive. So I appreciate that.
Like I said, if we strive for excellence, it doesn't happen overnight.
Great. I love having those reports. Yes, Greta?
I did have a question for Dusty regarding the cannabis income. So you addressed the question regarding the business numbers, but the dollar numbers are significantly different when you compare Q2 2020 to Q2 of this year. And I wondered if there was any explanation for that rather substantial drop.
Yeah, good question. I'll have to look into that further. It may be that we had cannabis applicants that had licenses to cultivate cannabis. They pay their tax once a year because it's based on their square footage of their cultivation. In years past, the, some of those folks would pay us quarterly rather than one lump sum. And so that could be representative of the difference there. The other thought I have, and again, I'd have to look into this, I bet our assistant planner would have been able to tell you right off the top of her head, but the other thought is that we do have some businesses, especially distribution facilities, where you can have, you know, some quarters they might be reporting something like $80,000 and other quarters they only are reporting $2,000. And I think that's because often they're holding on to products and when the market is favorable, they'll sell everything. And we have a big disparity from quarter to quarter with those types of businesses. So I don't think it's anything to be alarmed about. It's not a situation where, you know, we have businesses that have left the city or having a rapid decline in their success. So again, those are just guesses, but that could explain the difference, the wide difference between this quarter, quarter two of this year and quarter two of last year. And I'll look into that and I can certainly report back.
Greta, go ahead. Go ahead, then Jerry after that.
Thank you, Dusty. Appreciate that. The other question that I had was for Chief Luzeraga and not trying to infringe on any privacy issues, but your note that the K-9 officer and K-9 are out on leave, I just wonder, is this an extended leave?
We didn't know at the onset how long it was going to be, but I just got notified a few hours that they should be back out on the street as early as tomorrow. So, like we said.
Jerry?
So for Dusty, again, I know this is a lot of Davey issue, but as far as the nuisance fire issues, obviously it is fire season and I know in the past we've had citizens complain of property, usual suspects. Going to be a little more aggressive this year, Fire Department going after those folks?
Yeah, we had more success this year than in years past. The Fire Department and the Code and Force Division took the folks, notifying them of their need to cut back their vegetation due to the fire hazard imposed. That was done earlier in the summer. A lot of people were able to comply just based on that first courtesy letter. Some folks received a follow-up letter, letting them, notifying them that if they continued to fail to evade the situation, that they were going to face daily fines. And if I, if my recollections collect, Davey said that everyone complied after that second letter with the exception of one property owner, and I believe they're facing fines. But I haven't spoken to Davey in a few days about it, so maybe that that one lone wolf hopefully got the hint and was able to comply. I'm happy to report that we've had better compliance this year than in past years.
After last year, I've made more believers out of them. Thank you very much.
Very welcome.
Any other comments from the council or from the public regarding the department reports? Okay, we are moving ahead.
Mayor?
Yes.
Kathy has a comment.
Oh, okay, Kathy, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to let you know that I just received a message from the chamber, from Gloria Westby. She is a board member. from Gloria Westby, she is a board member, and she said that she would try and get out to more businesses so that everybody would have the appropriate signage for mask wearing, and to let them know that they still have lots of supplies, and she'll get them out there. Um, my other thing that I have is our September 22nd meeting. We'd like to change the date of that to September the 29th, which would be the following Wednesday, 'cause both City Manager Bender and Councilmember Gonzalez will be at a legal talk on the city's conference.
Okay. Um, it works for me. Anybody have an objection to that? So we cancel the regular meeting and hold a special meeting on, um, September 29th instead of the 22nd.
And we spaced it, knowing that you're gonna have that special meeting on the first as well, so it's...
But we haven't planned any meetings.
Yes, we have.
We don't get a chance to, to miss meetings. Okay, so the 29th will be City Council?
Yes.
I'm writing it down right now.
Thank you, that's all I had.
Yeah, and I, I suspect our, uh, meetings in September might be a little fuller agendas than the recent ones. We've been lucky to, um, have pretty light agendas, but I know there's some fairly, um, major issues coming up and things that we'll probably hear from the public about. So, um, and now we're moving on, unless there's another, uh, postscript there, uh, moving on to City Council member announcements, um, and reports, this would be for any of the agencies that, uh, attend or represent the city on behalf of. Uh, Jerry, do you have any?
Um, not at the moment. I, uh, I, uh, I don't think I've got anything scheduled till next month.
Okay, um, I'm just gonna do it in order I see it here. Greta? Anything to report?
I attended MCAG meeting Monday, uh, the 16th, so last week. Um, it was a pretty short meeting as far as MCAG meetings go. Uh, the thing that most was, uh, in effect for the community of Willets was a look at how monies are distributed to our senior centers. Um, the new, newly revised plan looks at not just miles, or not just number of riders serviced, but miles traveled, so this ended up being a good thing for Willets and North County, where we don't necessarily have the level of ridership that Ukiah has, but we cover a lot of ground, so this will actually net an additional $11,000 for Willet's Senior Center, who services a lot of, um, people in our community, so this was good news. Um, other than that, it was a lot of, um, procedural kind of stuff, nothing super exciting to report, and that's all I have.
Okay, uh, Sabrina, do you have any? Are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Sorry, I switched over to a landline, so, um, yes, I do, we have a meeting, uh, for the Arts Committee on this Friday, 9:00 AM, Davy calls, and then I had MTA meetings today, and again, just, uh, Matt, you'd be very happy, we're still, uh, moving forward, every meeting pretty much talking about electric buses, and today we just, uh, allocated, uh, funds for an additional, uh, bus, and we discussed some of the challenges that we're having, particularly, uh, with the setup of the, uh, additional need for electricity in Willet's and working with PG&E. Um, at this time, there's nothing that I need from the city, but, uh, MTA is working with PG&E, uh, and a set of few, few bumps to make sure that, uh, we can get the power that we need to charge up there, um, because Willet's has been selected as one of the first places, uh, to use our electric buses, which is super exciting when they do finally get here.
Okay. My sound went off for a minute, but I think it's back on, um, so I, I only, I missed a little bit of Sabrina's report, but I, I'm glad about the electric buses. Uh, is Larry still on?
No, I'm not. I'm here, but I have nothing to report.
Okay. For some reason, uh, some of these are not coming through. Uh, Jerry?
Well, I did want to add one thing. I did listen in on the Measure B meeting today, and it was Jed Diamond's last meeting, and I just kind of wanted to recognize his service to the, thank him for bringing that representative, uh, here, uh, kid, if you had a whole, uh, supervisor, uh, so they could start looking, but it's his last meeting, and I think Jed did, um, his subject matter, and I think he tried to represent Willet's to the best of his, or this area, uh, District 3, uh, to the best of his ability, so I want to recognize his service.
Yeah. Um, so I also have, I have two reports. EDFC met just after our last meeting, so a couple weeks ago, uh, and I think things are going along pretty smoothly there. They are finally getting some loans out in Sonoma County, which is good for the health of, of EDFC and for Sonoma County, but, um, we really appreciated having that report from them at our last, um, City Council meeting. Um, the other agency that I've been, I'm chairing is the Solid Waste Management Authority, it's the joint powers of, of county and three cities, not including Point Arena, um, and we've hit some pretty major roadblocks, um, at our last meeting, which was about a week ago. We were supposed to get a report from the Technical Advisory Committee, which, uh, was composed of staff people at the four jurisdictions, um, the county and the three cities, and it, we thought that they had a report to give, but they didn't, and it kind of meant that we have, we are not able to move forward on any, um, solution to the economic or financial crisis that that agency is currently facing. Uh, they had about $100,000 of extra, um, costs due to COVID, which had to do with a really huge increase in, uh, threshold hazardous waste to dispose of, and they have to pay to, to get rid of this waste, and they, they do provide that service to the public free, so, um, the costs went way up, and meanwhile, the revenue has not gone up. Um, we had several different approaches to how to, um, close the, the gap, but the Technical Advisory Committee did not make a recommendation, um, and that threw, uh, our general manager for kind of a surprise, um, shock, uh, because the, the situation is like we have a half a month of operating money, and we have no reserve whatsoever, um, which also makes it impossible to apply for grants, which is one of the main sources we usually get is at the Solid Waste Management. Today, given the combination of all these stresses and, um, failure to get political support, um, our general manager just submitted her resignation, um, at least one other council of board member and I, uh, in discussing what are our options at this point. We have a meeting scheduled on September 2nd, which is, um, a week from tomorrow, um, 10 o'clock in the morning, and we will be trying to come up with some kind of way forward, which, um, our options are not looking really good right now. Um, we have very, very small staff, and not having a general manager, uh, is pretty much not feasible, so I will be reporting back to you when we get there, um, and we may be asking for some support from our jurisdictions to be able to, uh, continue to function as a, as a service provider to the community. Okay, I just want to be on record, we're facing a crisis with, uh, solid waste management. Okay, um, that is our council reports. Do we have any good and wealthers from any council members? I'm not hearing anyone step forward, so I guess it's, uh...
Good, no news is... Sabrina?
We, I would, well, I would normally be announcing that we are having our opening day ceremony, taking off the soccer season, but unfortunately, I've made the decision to cancel the opening day ceremony since we usually have anywhere from 700 to 1,000 people attending, so we've opted not to do that, and instead, we have games only spread out at various fields at, uh, time-based parks, so as we don't, uh, we don't have any, uh, issues that would encourage a COVID outbreak. So, I guess the, the good and welfare would be that we're doing the right thing.
Yes. Yeah. The, the, uh, doing the right thing sometimes is a little painful, um, there's so much we have to give up. There are gonna be several, um, memorial gatherings in the next couple weeks, and, um, those would normally have been held indoors, and Mendel Correll would have sung for, uh, some of our past members who have passed away, and instead, those are gonna be at that park, and the singers are, if they can sing at all, are gonna be wearing masks, which is awkward, but, um, we're, we're still, you know, keeping those memories of people's life. And Greta, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I have a good, I just wanted to, um, acknowledge the letter that, um, Kathy sent out a couple weeks ago regarding our Public Works Department, who got a pat on the back and a big kudos from, um, Attorney Christopher Neary. He had, um, called in some complaint about, uh, cars parked along Mendocino Ave, West Mendocino, and Public Works responded quickly, and the Willet's PD helped out as well, tagging the car, getting rid of the cars, and putting up new signs prohibiting parking, so, um, it's always nice to hear, um, city staff called out by a community member, so I just wanted to make sure that they knew publicly that the council had received that, uh, that email, that letter, and we appreciate all the work that you're doing. So, thanks, guys and gals.
Thank you.
Yes, and it's always, um, you know, all of the good things that, that our staff does and our council does usually don't get a whole lot of acknowledgement. It's only when we screw up, or when something is not fixed, or people are complaining. Those things, uh, we hear a lot about, but, uh, 95% of, of what the city is doing is all this good stuff that we should remember to acknowledge from time to time, so I appreciate when, you know, Chris Neary or other people in the public, um, point those things out. Thanks, Greta, for bringing that up. And, um, we do not have a closed session, and we are going to have a special session on September 1st, a week from today, uh, at 6 o'clock, to talk about, uh, get a presentation about water issues, get the overview, um, and hear from the public about their concerns and what's going on, on water, big issue, so we'll see you all again in a week. And meanwhile, we are adjourning this meeting at 7:33.